It is 12 noon and we're going to call the meeting to order. Declaration of Aquarium, six members present, one member absent. Ms. Green had asked that I read a statement. Mr. Schaefer, I'm unable to attend today's meeting due to an unforeseen circumstance that has taken me out of town to care for a family member. Thank you, Amanda. Item C, public comments. Are there any cards? Okay. We will move to item D, consideration, discussion, and possible action related to the qualifications and duties of the superintendent of schools. Last week, we passed out the policy BJA local and legal. I asked everybody kind of to read over those. I think we all have a good unified sense of our priorities, and I think the policy BJA local provides the information that we need. As we go through this, I think what we need to do is be looking at any type of qualifications or experience to this particular job posting that we might have. Remember that the superintendent must have superintendent certification. And so basically, the items I think that we need to have up for discussion is the qualifications and experience. At this point, I'm going to open that up for discussion. The items I think that we will probably need to discuss or get everybody's feelings on would be the experience level that we're looking at, whether we want specific campus experience, whether we would like prior superintendent experience, experience at the deputy superintendent level or higher administration level. And I think that's probably what I think we probably need to spend some time getting everybody's thoughts on.
Well, just thinking back to just a couple of days ago when we were last here with our consultants and getting the feedback that we received, I felt like, you know, you said earlier, Mr. Schaefer, that you felt like we were on the same page as far as, you know, a lot of the things we're going to talk about today. It sounded like the community groups that were here were as well. And just going back to when they talked about the future in superintendent things, that they wanted to see classroom experience, administrative experience, you know, I think of course we're going to want all of that, or at least I do. I think it's got to be someone who has certainly excelled in many different areas as far as education goes. Secondary, being a principal administrator at the campus level, I do think is important. Maybe not a deal breaker, but I think it's important. It's a good place to start as far as experience in central office, absolutely. What that experience is, I mean, I think it would be great, someone who's been a superintendent, but I don't know if I want to limit that as well. Obviously, the certification is needed. So, I mean, I'm okay with a wide net as far as the qualifications goes, just because I know that there are a lot of people out there who are probably qualified, who might not been a superintendent. But again, I think that would be, if they've got superintendent experience, it's going to be a bonus.
Thanks. I'll add some of my thoughts. First of all, I did review our local policy, which obviously anybody else can review as well. And I think it does a nice job of covering the main areas that we would be looking for in our superintendent. I mean, obviously, it's our policies, but I mean, it was great for us to take some time and review it. And I really do think it touches a lot of the important areas. So that's, I'm glad we're using that. I'm happy with that. As far as the other qualifications, I certainly agree that central office experience is important. I guess we'll need to decide if we say that or we go to the next level of actually, you know, deputy superintendent experience or other superintendent experience. But to me, I'd probably be good with the net of at least central office experience. And then I also heard, you know, last week about the principal experience, and I think that's maybe something else we should consider putting on there. Obviously, that's a big piece of, I mean, those are the people out there, day to day, running our schools, such an important role. And I think being able, I mean, the superintendent's the leader of those leaders, and so maybe that experience may be something we want to add on there.
Thank you.
Those are my thoughts for now.
And I have very similar thoughts. We did also hear, I agree with the central office. I'm with you, Ms. McAdams. I don't know if it needs to be specific to a role in central, but central office for sure. And then also principal experience, we heard that quite a bit. We did hear that potentially elementary and secondary principal experience. I don't know that that's necessary. I think that might be getting too specific. But I agree with the principal experience, just because the value that that brings to an understanding, the level of understanding that brings to the superintendent, I feel is important. So I'm right there as well.
Thank you.
You know, we heard from the consultants in regards to the focus group that we had last Thursday, just some notes that I recall writing down then into memory today. But, you know, they mentioned things that were brought up, attributes, whatever, of a campus leader, having experience on a campus or campuses. I think even some said classroom experience, just to have gone through the ranks there as well. And then they also mentioned, you know, just district experience and being a part of that. And so it just kind of brings me back to some of the challenges that, when the question was asked by the consultants, what are some of the challenges that we have coming with any district? I mean, but as we focus on obviously us, but, you know, like Dr. Ely used to say, you know, five campuses in five years. Well, y'all, we're not done. We're not done. We're not going to just open those campuses and be done. I mean, we're going to continue to grow. I mean, if you went to the economic outlook, we already know where we're headed or projected. So we've got to be able to say we know where we're headed on that part of it. So you want someone that can kind of take that by the reins and lead us in the right direction. And then I keep harping back to the relationship of central office and to the campuses. We've got to have the liaison that can help us with that relationship. And I don't know how you put that into obviously any kind of posting or anything like that, but it's just something, you know, that we have to think about when we actually get into this. And so those two things kind of are glaring at me, you know, the five-year plan and where we're headed. So I think if we have that mindset in accordance with everything that we've already said, I think we can pretty much head in the right direction.
I tend to agree with Jeff, especially as to the part of the liaison or the communicator between central office and the campuses. And as to, actually, item number D, we're talking about qualifications and duties. I don't know if, you know, adding an additional qualification, have you had to be a superintendent or you had to have this experience and so forth, is necessarily something we have to have. That would be, you know, finding the person who can improve and continue to grow those relationships would probably come out from the application process, the interview process, and so forth. So if the board was to decide to just stick with the qualifications and duties as described in the local policy, I would have no problem with that. You know, but at the same time, if somebody wants to add a qualification of principal experience or superintendent's experience, I wouldn't have any problem with that either. I just would hope that that wouldn't limit potential applicants, as Mr. Nugent mentioned.
At this point, let's, I think the comments are good. Let's focus maybe at the lower level. I heard Mr. Horak mention that teach and experience. I don't know if I personally want to go down that far. I think it's a good point, it's something that we definitely heard during the community forums and the summary of that. I would think if you make it to the principals' level, I mean, I can't imagine being a good principal if you were not a good teacher at that point. Specifically, so we can get to the point we need to get to, what level principal? You think it just, you were a principal? Is that something that everybody's good with, or do you think we need to get more specific?
I'd like just principal.
Okay. Okay, so we got the principal. Let's go to, and the other one is the, again, the superintendent certification, which according to the legal and local, there's something we have to have, so we don't have much to say on that one. Let's talk a little more about the district-level administrative experience. I'm sensing that everybody thinks that is important. I guess the big debate is, what kind of level do we want? Do we really want, is there something that we really want to get specific on? Do we want to use the word deputy superintendent or just district-level administrative experience?
I would lean towards, like I said earlier, the central office experience or just district-level experience, not getting any more specific than that. That's what we did six years ago, by the way. That's what, you know.
Yeah, I agree with that. And with, whenever you add all of this, plus principal experience, plus central office experience, I think you're covering quite a range.
Okay.
Again, that balance, but, sorry, that balance between, you know, getting the qualifications we need without, but still having a wide enough net to allow enough good candidates to be able to apply.
Would we have to define what we mean by district-level or central office-level experience? Or just leave that vague?
That's the lawyer speaking. Again, six years ago, it said previous central office experience.
All right, let's hold thoughts on that one for a second. What is everybody's feelings on if they have prior superintendent experience? I think if we get to that point, I think it's going to be easier to define what we want on the previous one. How important do you think, and again, I'm doing more of a recap, is I think I was gauging everybody thinking that some type of superintendent experience would be very important?
Well, that was one of the items that the consultants identified was, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a feeling amongst the participants in the forum groups that it would be somebody who had that experience in leading a district with continued growth, multiple high schools, those types of things, is either some type of superintendent, deputy superintendent, some type of role like that. That was the impression that I got from their verbal report, at least.
I think in conjunction with Mr. Ben there, because I believe the focus group's feedback was that, when you break that down with a district of our size, I mean, I don't know if we want to maybe not go in the direction where maybe we're interviewing someone without superintendent experience. Just my thoughts, because of how big we are, where we're headed, and things like that. So based off of what we've, we got in the focus group and this and that, I mean, I guess I could say I'd be okay with putting it in there if it's not already, so.
All right, so at this point, let me do a recap. So I'm hearing that, one, we want a superintendent certification, two, we want some type of campus administrative experience, we want district-level administrative experience, and that's the one piece I think we got a massage. And then the last one is, I'm seeing that we would want some type of superintendent experience. Am I correct on, deputy superintendent or superintendent experience? I think that those last two elements are the ones that...
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure that it needs to be superintendent experience. I get what you're saying with the district of our size and the growth that we've had, that it would be nice to have someone jump into that role that has had experience at that level, right? I mean, that's what you're saying. I just, I don't know yet.
And I'm not saying it's a deal breaker kind of deal. I'm just thinking, where we're at, size comparatively speaking throughout Texas, and just CSISD is an attractive landing spot, you know, it's a great task to take on. And, you know, we're tasked with figuring that out. So that's kind of where I was at.
And I guess my thoughts on that would be more along the lines, I mean, just hypothetically, right? If, yes, we are a growing and reasonably sized district, but we are by no means a, you know, a huge district in the state of Texas. I mean, but just, you know, hypothetically, we could bring a deputy superintendent from a very successful district that's twice as big as ours, but, you know, them moving to a superintendent role here would be a great fit for them and a great fit for us, right? Somebody who was knowledgeable with a bigger, possibly growing school. So they didn't necessarily, they'd never been a superintendent before, but man, they'd, you know, done almost, they would still be well-qualified and well-poised to be a superintendent here. Again, a hypothetical where I would say may not ever be, would not be necessary to have superintendent experience. And let me follow one other kind of point along that. It's like, like you said, it's not a deal breaker. Then to me, let's take that when we do our interviews and we do our decision. But again, leave a little room open for people to apply. That's kind of my thoughts.
You mentioned superintendent, deputy superintendent. Why not put both of those on there?
Both, experience at both levels?
No, but like you said, there might be a deputy superintendent out there that's never had the opportunity. So maybe you put superintendent/deputy superintendent experience. Or, and/or.
Deputy superintendent or superintendent?
Why not do that? And then your net has gotten a little wider, like going back to what Mr. Nugent said, so...
And I'd be more comfortable with that, yeah, the deputy superintendent level than just a superintendent level.
Great point. I agree 100%, so.
Thanks.
Well, and, I mean, I agree with that, and I'm good with that. If we want to, you know, if we need to put the, you know, the titles in there for experience, I mean, I'm fine with that. Because again, where we are as a district and our size, you know, we definitely want some experience, obviously, from central office. And if we want to narrow it down to, you know, assistant or deputy or superintendent, I'll be fine with that. One thing that, again, I guess when, I've gone through this process, not in a school district, but in other organizations, and it's always intriguing to me, because I always, and I don't feel like this at this point with y'all, but a lot of times I feel like we're just hiring a resume. And, you know, and I think I know, we all know we're not doing that. I'm much more interested in the person at this point. But I know in the past, I've seen, we talk about education levels and things like that. I mean, is that something we need, I mean, that's certainly a qualification. I mean, is there, and it came up in the report from our consultants briefly, briefly. But, I mean, are we looking for a certain level of education or...
It is my understanding, and I'll have, if somebody can correct me, but I think to get the superintendent certification, you have to have at least a master's degree.
And I'm good with that, because again, I feel like if you say, well, you've got to have, you know, whether it's a doctorate or PhD or whatever, all of a sudden, you are, the pool's getting a lot smaller. And if that's what y'all want, that's fine, but I just, I prefer to keep it, I mean, the master's level is, I'm good with that.
At this point, in my original notes, I had that on there, but if you can't, if we're going to say that you have to have the superintendent's certificate, I mean, you're kind of duplicating.
Okay.
You can just leave it at that.
No, I think you'd only need to put something on there if you were going to go higher, which I would prefer not, but...
Ms. McAdams?
Well, I guess my question is more on the process. Are we going to come to a final decision here? Are we going to go into executive session before we have our final list?
Let me summarize what I'm seeing or hearing from as a recap. One, we're wanting a superintendent certification, campus administrative experience, district-level administrative experience, and either a deputy or superintendent experience. Frankly, I don't see any need to, if somebody, if we'd like to go into executive decision, but I don't think there's anything on that point that I would think that we needed to discuss. I think at the most part, I think we're almost there, if we're not there.
If we're going to require somebody to have deputy, at least deputy superintendent experience, you know, we don't have to list central office experience and so forth, so...
So we're really going, okay, so superintendent certificate, campus administrative experience, and either deputy slash superintendent experience. That's the three qualifications and experience that we'd like to list.
Mr. President, one question, and I'm not sure if I'm jumping ahead or not, but does the boards, from speaking with the consultants on the legal issues, one of the things we have to decide is if we're going to post for internal, external candidates?
Let's leave that one, item two, under consideration.
Okay.
On this one, I just want to really concentrate on the qualifications and duties.
I'm good with the list you said. Is this something we vote on or just kind of agree on?
I think I'd prefer to have a motion if...
A motion to accept the, is it BJA local? Is that right? With the amended four...
Basically, we're going to keep the policy the same, but we're going to add the qualifications, the three qualifications.
So yeah, a motion to keep BJA local as is with the four qualifications added as stated.
I'll second.
Hold on a second. I would say there's, is it three?
You took it down to three.
I think we took it down to three. All right, let's recap. Superintendent certificate, campus administrative experience, and either deputy or superintendent experience. I think Mr. Ben, I think Mr. Ben was saying that we were duplicating those two.
So y'all want to do the motions? Did I miss that?
No, you can fix it.
If you'd like to rephrase your motion.
I'll rephrase my motion then. A motion that we accept BJA local as is with additional three qualifications as stated.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Item E, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding posting the position of superintendent of schools as required by law. I'd like to start by taking in some of the consideration and feedback from our constituents, the consultants, and basically the qualifications we discussed. I personally feel that we have internally, I think we have a great leadership team. In my opinion, by law, well, not in my opinion, by law, we have to post this job posting at least 10 school days or 10 workdays internally. I think with that said, I think we have a good pool of talent. My direction or question to y'all would be, do you think that's a good starting point to just open it up internally with the 10 school days? We can open that up for discussion.
Well, generally speaking, the community forum groups seem to be, with the notation that there's always room for improvement, seem to be happy and satisfied with the current state of the district and the direction that it was moving. So I'll just throw that out there as kind of a starting point, and then listen to what everybody else has to say.
Well, I mean, I certainly, you know, agree with that. The feedback was very helpful. I don't know if any of it was surprising, but it was helpful and I think affirming in a lot of different areas. As far as direction of the district, and again, as many said, you know, we're not quite there yet. There's certainly, there's room for improvement, but the direction we're headed, I think it was overwhelmingly positive of not only where we are, but where we're headed. And so, again, I think that was affirming, but also just legally, we do have 10 days. So, I mean, we put it out there, and if there are any, you know, internal candidates to interview, we can certainly do that in the next 10 days before we have to decide to go a different direction. And I, because I know you've looked a lot into the legalities of it, much more than I have, but isn't that, that's correct?
During the 10 days, we, anybody that applies internally, we can interview them.
Okay.
If we post it tomorrow, the next day, I mean, we can legally do interviews as soon as, within that 10-day time period.
What I, going back to what Mr. Ben said, what I thoroughly enjoyed about the consultant focus group was, from Thursday to really last, yesterday, the texts or phone calls or something from folks that were either on the focus group, or some I didn't even know were on the focus group, but then obviously different community members that had heard about the focus group and maybe things like that. What I liked was that the overall consensus based off of what the consultant said, but then also what the participants said, was obviously they were happy with where we were headed and what we had done. Wonderful, we can talk about the past, we'd done pretty good. But it's that, I mean, I go back to that growth part. Was the focus group, were the participants looking at the vision and confident that what we have in place with our leadership teams, with our campuses, things like that? Did we have some of the people where we could really take that next step? And based off what the consultant said and things like that and what I heard, we looked good. So I'm okay with starting internally to jumpstart the process.
I think what was... I think what was really good, that kind of fell in our lap on this one, is we had the community forum, you know, it was in the media, and then we had 50 Men Can Cook.
Yes.
The 50 Men Can Cook, I mean, I think there was like 2,000 people there. I mean, I think that was a good gauge of getting input and, you know, all the input that I received was favorable, I didn't, you know, and there were a lot of people there. I think that was, and again, the timing of this being last week, I think was very, very good.
Agreed. And I, again, also heard what you guys heard that from the forum and, or the focus groups, and then outside of that, people are happy with the direction that we're heading. And I also, this was in our executive session, but the consultants also mentioned the Good to Great book. And I, I had mentioned this to a couple folks that in November, when I got back on the board, I decided to reread it because I do think that is a good model for our school district, you know. And one of the things, and I mean, the consultants mentioned it because I'm generalizing a lot, but one of the general points of the book is, right, if, you know, to have a successful organization is you start with good people. And we've said this many times, we have lots of very good people in our school district right here. But then you set a good vision and a good direction, and we heard, we've heard from our community, and we believe we have that in place. And then you continue to just have steady, focused work in that direction, using those good people. And, you know, all that said, and then reviewing our qual, the qualifications we've put in place and what we've heard from our community, I also agree that we should certainly start internal for the search. I'm good with that.
I'm right there with all of you. I think that's a good place to start as well. And, I mean, we did say continuously, every time we talked about Dr. Ely and him leaving, we always, someone always mentioned that he's done a great job, you know, prepping us, prepping our district to, to continue in, in this direction. So, and, and I didn't know that you were rereading that book, because I am also rereading that book. So, it's kind of funny. And, and then when I heard them mention it as well, so yes, I, I think, I'm down now. I think starting internal is, is the right direction, the right, right path.
Want a motion?
I'm going to, before we do that, I'm going to pick on somebody that's in the audience right now. Ms. Hickman, what you have heard, I think, before we make a motion, is there, in regards to posting this position, is there anything that we would need to add or if we would, we're going to decide, if we make the motion here to post this, is there anything else that you would need to get this up and going?
I don't think so. The notes that I have.
I'm strong.
Ask questions. Use the microphone.
Yeah, microphone. I guess I should ask you to come to the microphone.
Good hustle.
All right, am I on? All right. And just to verify the notes that I have, you would like to post the position using the local policy with qualifications, including campus principal experience, a superintendent certification, and either superintendent or deputy superintendent experience, all required qualifications for the posting. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Then I think I have everything I need. Thank you.
We do need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we post our superintendent position internally.
As required by the educational code, section 11.1513.
Yes, that.
I will second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Does anybody, I guess at this point, there would probably be no need to go to executive With that being the case, it is 12:35 and the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.